Meeting, starting right here, invite everybody to make your year September the second. Starting in the fall of the year, things gonna change, the weather and everything, if it would. We'll do the pledge of allegiance, if I can stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Counsel will give approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Got a motion, need a second? We had a second statement, all in favor? Four oh. Public comment, agenda items. Citizens are encouraged to comment at this time on any item specifically listed in the meeting agenda. This comment time will be limited to three minutes. Approval of the minutes for the meeting, August first of two thousand twenty-five.
So moved.
Got a motion, need a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Four oh. Okay, moving along. Item number five is Mountain Heritage Festival, request to close Main Street. Is there you gonna speak about that?
Yes, Mayor Protem and Counsel, the, the Chamber of Commerce has submitted their paperwork for the Mountain Heritage Festival, they've been given their invoice, have been in communications with Mr. Van Moose. His only concern was if the festival is canceled, would the chambers be, would the chamber be reimbursed their payment? And the answer was yes, if the event is canceled due to inclement weather and no resources are needed, then they will be reimbursed. They've also, have already obtained the correct paperwork from DOT, and we are in the process of finalizing all the papers, all the EAP that's required for it.
I don't know what year this is for the Heritage Festival. Zach, you got that information? It's been going on for a long time, but it's. Was they, why they want to club the street for bucks on their bucks for just an event?
Just the annual.
Kind of special event or anything?
The annual Mountain Heritage Festival, when they set up on Main Street.
Motion approved.
Got a motion?
I'll say it.
Got a second? Any discussion, all in favor? Three one. Special request, Linda Simmons, to use chalk from the town sidewalk.
When you go up there or am I good here?
You would just go up there and state your name.
Yes, my name's Linda Simmons, I am with Allegheny Lives, Sheriff for Unity in the Community, also President of Allegheny Lives, and also Community Division Specialist here in Allegheny County. I'm a contact with that healthcare. And this is the second annual nine eight eight day coming up, and we're trying to just get more information out, make people more aware about this resource that we have to help prevent suicide. It is also for any mental health challenges. So whether it's the person that's having the challenge, or somebody that's concerned about somebody, they have trained counselors that you can call anytime, and, and they can help either get you to resources, or whatever the case may be. So we are wanting to be a part of this, we want Allegheny County to be represented in nine eight eight day this year. Nine eight eight day is actually on Monday, nine eight, but we know that the town doesn't have a lot of people out and about on a Monday. So, we, a group of us in our meeting talked about doing sidewalk chalk art, and just on the sidewalks, putting nine eight eight messages on there. So when people are walking around, they just kind of see it and get that, along with a couple of other things that we are gonna do. We have some storyboards to put information in, we've talked with businesses, they are on board and fine with us doing this. And we'll probably have a couple of other little things that we'll do around town, rock painting possibly on Monday, and at the park maybe. And somebody had mentioned that possibly we could chalk paint on the sidewalk at Cross Park as well. And while I'm at it, I wanna thank this committee because, for your support for three years now with Unity in the Community, really, really appreciate it, even though we didn't get to use Cross Park this year, as of now. And that's, I have.
Is there a specific weekend you wanna do this, or?
This weekend?
This coming weekend.
Yeah, our notice with everything was kind of short, and by the time we got all the communities together, we've only had about a week to talk about this in plan. So we're trying to keep it really simple, without too much manpower needed. We're a little low on manpower sometimes when it comes to events and things. So yeah, this weekend, I think Friday is when a few people would want to go out and do the chalk art, which would be not the entire sidewalk, just in front of a couple of different businesses, Becca's, Touch of Grace, Muddy Creek, places that we have talked to that are in agreement. And we keep it simple, the chalk, of course, washes off, and when it rains, it will probably be gone. People walking on it might get rid of some of it, too.
Was I, you got any problem with that, or?
So, we don't, they're not using any resources, as I specified in my, my notes to the council. But we don't, we're not using resources from the town, but technically that would be considered altering the appearance, even if it were temporary, so it would have to require a town council approval, because it is on public property. And it would have to, it'd be up to council whether that's something that they allow to occur, and any stipulations would be placed for that, such as you have to, it has to be removed by a specific date, even if it doesn't rain, and they would have to remove it themselves. That was, that's why it's come to council, because it's, it would often be parents in the sidewalks temporarily.
I'm very curious, it sounds like certainly a good, good program, but you're gonna do several things downtown, what about the thousands of people that don't happen to go downtown? What, what other means do you have to publicize?
Well, we're hoping actually on nine eight, on that day, that's actually nine eight eight day, to be at Trojan Village. I think there's a lot of people around there, we're doing a social media push also, so we'll have a lot of stuff on social media. We have some listservs with people that we send messages out to. The storyboards are like a couple of the businesses, talking to them to put up their like eleven by seventeen, and we can put information in there, their weather doesn't affect them or anything, and they're just a stand, basically. And so we can put stuff there, and they can go, if we're able to put one around, maybe Food Line, and up at Trojan, maybe over at a couple of businesses somewhere, so we're just kind of asking. Ideally, I would have loved to have had a proclamation read, nine eight eight day, but we were late on time, and I didn't know who I had to ask about that.
But this happens, but this is coordinated on nine eight every year?
Yes, yes, this is the second year. So nine eight eight is still relatively new, it finally rolled out in July of two thousand twenty-two. And it's grown considerably, our calls, and in North Carolina, we are doing a really good job at fielding those calls. There are some states that it was just very overwhelming, and they are struggling, and hopefully they'll work that out, because it is a really good resource for people that are having a hard time. And we work really hard towards mental health awareness, so that we can help our community be, you know, better wellness in our community, as well as suicide prevention, because we are still the county in all of North Carolina with the highest suicide rate, we still have more than double the state rate.
Well, my mom used to whip me if I was marking on the. But I think it's for good cause, and I'm all my promotions to let you all do this.
Do we need to set a date, as far as if we don't get rain, I mean, I didn't mention that, I understand, I don't know what we need to?
Yeah, if, if council wants to set the stipulations, because it is not an event that we planned or pre-scheduled around the house, then yes, council would have to set stipulations, so if you want to set a date, it said it has to be washed off by Tuesday of that following week, or whatever, then you would, and speaking to her, her email that she sent me, her thought back there was that they were willing to clean up the sidewalk chalk, that was a request by council.
What kind of timeline do you need for that?
Good question, um.
If you gave it a follow-up reason or something?
Yeah, I think we could definitely do it.
And that's not gonna happen with the Mountain Heritage Festival, right?
No, Mountain Heritage Festival will be on the twentieth, that gives a whole week.
Yeah, yeah, we'd, we would have for the following weekend, we could get it cleaned up.
I'll make a second motion if we can put the following weekend, I only know the dates.
Uh, that would be, so it's.
Is that the twelfth, Friday?
Friday will be the twelfth, yeah.
Yeah, so if you. If you do it with the stipulation, has to be cleaned up by the thirteenth, then that's when we would, we would have to inform you with Dan tomorrow, and have her sign that, indicate that it has to be cleaned up by the thirteenth.
You do that, too? Got a say, a motion, got a second, any discussion? Like we just said, all in favor? Three one.
Thank you.
Put your chalk down. Uh, approval on the, of these W W T P blower motor purchase.
Counsel, if you remember at the last meeting, we discussed that we had a failure at a water treatment plant, where two of our blowers went out, we replaced the two blowers. We, if you remember, I told you the cost was gonna be over five thousand dollars, but we had to get an emergency replacement for those. We did receive a notice of violation from the North Carolina D B Q, as we were expecting to receive one from them, because of the sewer plant numbers that were coming out during that time. We replied back with them, with all the remedies that we've done, and the follow-up test results after the samples were re-collected again. But this is just so the council can see the cost and approve the cost of that, those blowers we are getting. And that was to keep us back in compliance with the E Q.
Need a motion?
Need a motion.
I made a motion, we need a motion.
I'll say the motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Four one. Four oh. Uh, okay, this is George Piggy. August tax release.
I need for the council to approve the tax release for billing correction for Wells Fargo leasing. The release amount will be forty-three dollars and eighty-seven cent, and we collected of that thirty-seven dollars and seventy-eight cent.
So moved.
Say it.
I want you to have a second, any discussion, all in favor? Four oh. Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Well, you did that, that's it. Got a request from Kathy Murphy. Kathy, how are you?
I'm good, Erica. Okay, I'm here this evening to discuss, it's called Murphy Street, and it's in the Collins Development, and it's actually a road that goes from Westview Drive all the way up to Mitchell Mountain. I kind of researched it, and, and the town manager did an excellent job in looking into this for me. My mother-in-law, Olmee Murphy, I'm her power of attorney, and she has lifetime rights to the residence at fifty-nine Murphy Street, which is actually owned by my husband, Chris Murphy, and then his two sister-in-laws, Patsy Murphy, and Jamie Murphy, and then Shelby Bryce's two sons, Mark Doug and Mark Dozier. There had been some mid-confusion about this road for several years now. At one point, we were told, I've been to the town several times over the past several years, to find out what, what situation was with this road. And at one point, I was actually told that it had been taken into the town system, because there were now four residences on the road. So the trash truck runs there, all the addresses are actually Murphy Street, all, all houses up through there. But after the research by the town manager, he contacted me and said, no, that was not the case. It was a private, you know, drive. My father-in-law, he purchased that property in February fifth, nineteen seventy-five, from Raymond Andrews, and it's a very simple, short deed, and there's no discussion over right-of-way, or a private road, or anything running, running through there. So they've always maintained it, thought it was their private drive. Well, after research, it was found that it indeed is a road that was built to access Mitchell Mountain. And I researched, and I found the plaque, the original plant was, that was recorded on October twenty-second, nineteen sixty-five, and the development below was called Crest, Ridge Crest Estates. And it shows, shows an old road that goes from lot number sixty-two on up to Mitchell Mountain. In September of nineteen sixty-eight, the deed for lot sixty-two was purchased, he's purchased by R.T. Amos and Jim Millis. And then on January third and first, nineteen eighty-nine, Mr. Amos and Jim Millis, they formed a partnership, and the company was called Amos, Millis and Company, and they also purchased forty-two acres on Mitchell Mountain, which is, which is up above where Franklin Hatch's home is, you can go up that road if you're moving with the area, you go past my Murphy residence, then the Andrews residence, and then there's the property, I believe now it's owned by Hart, Clint Hart, and that was Franklin Hatch's, so it's the property beyond there was a development that was created. And so, the intention was that they had bought lot eighty-two, because it joins Westview Drive, so that allowed them access to the old road, and join them together to make it a road that actually goes from Westview Drive all the way up to Mitchell Mountain. So. So then, in nineteen ninety-two, the Amos and Mills Company, they actually have a deed where Mitchell Mountain Road was not Mitchell Mountain Road at the time. So they have a deed where they purchased that right-of-way, plus they had the right-of-way off Westview Drive, so they had two, two ways to get to the Mitchell Mountain development. The people had bought lots on the Mitchell Mountain, and they had made improvements to that road. And then they all did a statement saying they had been accessing twenty years, and the road had been improved, and my understanding, the town took it over to Town Road now. So this road, Murphy Street, was never improved to make it an access to Mitchell Mountain. But it is owned by the current owner, Mr. Raymer. And so it shows on the tax map, which was provided to me, it actually shows the road going from Westview Drive all the way up to Mr. Raymer's property on Mitchell Mountain. So I discussed this with the town manager, and about the road, because there's four houses on the road now, and the new person that lives there, her name is Barbara, she had gotten an estimate to have the road improved and paved, thinking that it was their private driveway, which it is not, it's a road, and it's owned by this Mr. Raymer. So after I talked to town manager, I got, I got Mr. Raymer's number, and I contacted him about the road. So the thought, you know, about the road, the maintenance of the road, and, you know, everything. And asked him about, would he be willing to sell it to the town, for it to become a town road? And he said, yes, he would. He had actually, when he bought the property in twenty thirteen, he actually, since he was not accessing his property on that road, he actually had approached the town at that time about selling that land to him, because he didn't want to keep paying taxes on it, and he wasn't using it, and he said he was turned down. So I'm coming before you tonight to have this looked into, as far as it becoming a town-maintaining road, because it's the only road in that development, you know, it's, wasn't paved, you know, wasn't paved. I was kept waiting for them to pave it, when they were paving all the other roads. And my mother-in-law, she ninety-three-year-old, and so she's not, you know, she's not. She, for years, she, she would get out there with a quick sec asphalt, and patch the holes, and keep it up, and so it was passable. But now, it's, it's really fallen into disrepair, between snow plowing, the trash truck, and then the construction of the new home across from her, all the construction equipment going down that road, it's in pretty bad shape. So, Miss, so Mister, and I've got all the information here, y'all want it, I got all the deeds, all the way back, all the way to who owns it now. And it was actually, the road, the width of the road is thirty foot, fifteen from the center on and each side, allowing enough for it to have become a road when it was first planted, but it never was, you know, improved. I will tell you, I do have, I don't have it with me, it's on my phone, let me bring my phone in, but the quote from the contractor to improve the road, which was not just paved, it was actually going in there, removing the old asphalt, grading it, making it, you know, thirty foot wide, putting down six inches of base stone, you know, compacting it, and really making it into a road, and then putting, I think, three, I think it was three inches of asphalt, I'm not, I'm not positive on that, but the price was twenty thousand dollars, is what, and that was to run it from Westview Drive up to, I always call it, I call Franklin Hatch's property, but it's the property that, you know, I believe Mr. Hart owns now. So that's, that's why I'm coming for you, to see if that's a possibility, that that could be looked into. He said he would be, he would be more than happy to sell it to the town, he didn't want, he didn't tell me what, he said he didn't want no atrocious, you know, price for it, and that he would just like not have to pay taxes on it, being usable by the people living on that road.
So Mayor Protem and Counsel, if, if this is an option that the, the council wishes to pursue or look into, at this point in time, we wouldn't have to take any action. I would have to reach out to Risk Management with the North Carolina League of Necessities, have them assess that, that technically is still considered to be a private drive, have them assess it. And then we would have to, they would let us know what would be required on their end, for us to be able to take in the, the ownership of that itself, and turn it into a street. Of course, that would require public hearings, and then we would also have to negotiate with Mr. Raymer the price of that land, which we're only limited to the tax value of the property itself, so we wouldn't have to calculate what the tax value of that, of that little small section. I'll put it up on your map, if you can tell the, what we finally figured out is, if you click on the road itself, it shows up to be Mr. Raymer, whereas if you click on any other town, any other street, it won't go to a property owner, because it's either owned by the town, or it's owned by the, by the state itself. So when I was looking at it, I was like, I was kind of curious, there's a line running right out of the middle somewhere. Soon as we clicked on it, it showed up to be Mr. Raymer. And obviously, I'd direct it hurt to him, if he just confirmed that that is his property. So at this point in time, it's more for informational purposes, and then counsel to discuss that, and decide if you want the town to reach out to Risk Management to determine whether that's something that we want to pursue. Of course, once we obtain that information, we would update counsel on what it would cost the town to take that in and maintain it moving forward. In regards to the, her statements of the trash truck going up there, it does go up there, because our policy for elderly and disabled individuals with doctor's notes allow our trash personnel to be able to appoint to their driveway, or walk up to their house to collect the trash, if needed. However, that is not, if, if she was not, if Ms. Murphy was not ninety-three years old and unable to walk, she would be expected to bring her trash in all the way down to the bottom of the hill, to have it collected by the town.
All this is in the town limits, correct?
The, the town limits is dark, black line, so it would have to stop where that black line is, unless the property owner elected to, to, to sell more to the town itself. This, this is the end of the town limits.
Yes.
This is the end of the road, it extends into the county itself.
Do you believe in the town limits?
Yes, yes, yeah, like I said, the properties, the property up above it is the regular property, it accesses Mitchell Mountain, but my mother-in-law, if you look at the very bottom, where it shows the lots for the subdivision, she's the, she's the first lot, after the little lots. So that's her lot, and then the Andrews is above her, and then the new home is right across from my mother-in-law's, and then beyond her is, is the Hart Land. So then above that's the Mitchell Mountain, you know, so it's just mainly, I would say the road would just go as far as Mr. Hart's property.
To, in regards to the properties being in the town limits, her, her, there's one property that's entirely, well, it's a small little section of it, it's not in the town limits, but the other two properties are not wholly in the town limits, they're partially in there.
So your recommendation is, it's up to the?
My recommendation is that this is something the council wants to do, we need to get some more information from Risk Management, and then we need to, we would have to have further discussion under the articles of real estate appraisal, or real estate acquisition by the council. real estate appraisal, a, a real estate acquisition by the county, town company.
We don't have, we don't really have a policy for anything like this, correct?
No, ma'am, we do not have a policy for anything.
And we're, we're not going out and taking in roads as a general rule, but, um, would, would part of this need to be annexed or is, or is the part of it...
That would be a stipulation the council can elect to do. You can, you can annex, uh, such as you have the...
If this is requested.
If it's requested, you can annex or you, there's three, three options to annex properties into the town. You have, uh, voluntary annexation where the property owners request to be annexed into the town. You have satellite annexation where you're annexing areas that are not contentious to the town, but they are within a three-mile jurisdiction of the town's outer boundary. Or you have the involuntary, otherwise known as forced annexation, where the town can, uh, annex or development of that property in a region.
So you're going to get back with us with more information, get back to us with more information, correct?
If, if council wishes for us to, for me to seek more information from, uh, the legal aspects of the league of municipalities, then yes, we'll proceed with trying to find this information, communicate with Mr. Raymer and Ms. Murphy on the next steps that we would follow through. And of course, if, if the council does not like, uh, or doesn't agree with what the league of municipality recommends or neither party can come to an agreement on the terms or the town to take over that, then council can always withdraw the, uh, from proceeding forward with the process.
But we're not agreeing to anything, right, you know?
We're not agreeing to anything. It's just if you want us to look into what is required, we can do that. Uh, if not, then technically we would, uh, just not seek any further information at this point in time.
I'd like to, uh, you know, force to look into it and everything and, uh, see what we can do for you there.
Yeah, the only, the only thing I'd like to input about it is, um, we, like I said, we didn't know about this. My father-in-law never knew about this and legally, we don't own that property. So legally, we can't go in there and, you know, do work on somebody else's property. So that's what I explained to Mr. Raymer, you know, we didn't know that it was owned. We thought it was, like you said, a private drive and it's not. It's actually a road owned by somebody. So, um, that's, you know, that's the issue. And of course, like I said, my mother-in-law, she has a living income. And the other woman, Barbara Howe, Barbara Howard, that's her name, Barb Howes. She just built the house and she's the one, and of course, she said she would have to take out a home equity loan to, you know, to help pay for it if you just to bother it up.
This lady bought a home, a, a bought?
She built a home.
She bought, uh, she had the land for some time?
She, not that long. I remember...
So she buys this land?
Right.
And she's having her home built?
Yeah, home built.
And I'm assuming perhaps the relatives are helped to with this?
I don't know, but nobody knew, we didn't know, but I didn't know about this road until he found it.
But, but you're, it's not your responsibility to tell someone else what's going on with the property with this thought. But it's a question to me, it's why this was not revealed to the person building the house, which we don't have an answer for that, but that's a question in and of itself.
Right. If she got along on it, she may have something called title insurance or she may have that and it may have some guarantee of access to the property.
But she should have had some heads up and of course she started building the house and she could get her property, wouldn't you think?
I would think so. My fence would require you to be able to do that.
And they have, they have now, it wasn't till years later, they actually did do have a right of way now, but when...
Who did?
The people that live on that road.
And who gave them the right of way?
I think it was, uh, when this Amos Mill, this company made the subdiv, made subdivided the land on Mitchell Mountain and that was in, uh, yeah, nineteen ninety-six.
Okay, this, this, you know, well, it's her heart and I hope she's happy with the purchase, but...
But we just thought it was a right, you know, a private drive with a right of way.
Apparently she did too, ma'am.
But come to find out, it's owned by someone.
Okay, I'd say I, I think, uh, well, Jose can, uh, uh, check on that and we'll see what we can do for you.
Well, I appreciate it. And like I said, I've got, I've got Mr. Raymer's phone number and I've got all this information. I'll be happy to.
Yeah, well, uh, I'll reach out with you because I need to contact Mr. Raymer so that we can let him know that our risk assessment would be taken out of the property.
He's actually, um, he lives in Greensboro, but he's up here at Mitchell Mountain all the time. So I think he's planning on, I think he's planning, he's a dentist, I think he's planning on retiring and he's going to get a permit.
Hopefully at that point in time he'll fix his road.
I don't know if he knew he was...
It's apparently it's his road.
If he was responsible for it until I called him. I don't know.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Uh, item number ten, Steve Mason, TDA presentation and request for financial officer to manage pickleball court.
Okay. So, uh, to, to kind of start off with the TDA report, this is the, uh, the annual report for the TDA. And I just wanted to share a few things, a few highlights off that first page with you just a little bit. I think you have a copy of it as well. In comparison to last year's budget cycle, there was a noticeable difference of two hundred fifty-three thousand dollars to two hundred eight thousand dollars versus prior year. So there's definitely an increase in, in, in funds received this year. That's definitely a, a direct result to, to what we've seen with overnight stays in, in the county and seeing more numbers indicating that, uh, we experienced that, that increase. Uh, funds have not, uh, we also have not only increased funding for grants, but also support of, uh, trail systems, uh, up at San Brown Mountain with, uh, ASTA. And, uh, so that, uh, is a, a transition of funding. It was along, along with, uh, the, the wayfinding signage project that we're currently in the middle of right now. And we're out, well, as of, I believe this week, uh, they actually go out for bid. So, uh, we, we ought to be able to see what, uh, what funding is, is necessary for those signage, that signage project, uh, as we, as we see over the next sixty to ninety days in that process. So hopefully we'll be able to see, uh, some, uh, opportunity for us to be able to start looking at, and put signs in the ground, uh, sometime this fall.
Mr. Mason, uh, someone brought this to my attention on, on that topic. I know you've got other things here. Uh, that if the signs were not on the right of way, the actual state right of way, that they would be less expensive? Is that an option?
Uh, it, it, there is an option in doing some of that and that has been discussed. And where, where that's been discussed primarily, uh, is, uh, uh, in the outer line areas away from town because of restrictions by DOT in relationship to distances from different locations that you're identifying. So with the fact that we have a, a central location in one town and we don't have connecting towns or cities, uh, sometime, uh, most of that sign is going to be, uh, directed towards right around town, in town and in close proximity. So when you get out to those outer line areas, uh, there, there will be opportunity for some privatized land or looking at the options of doing that for sure.
And, and you said that it was going out for bids so that she would know what it's going to cost. All their destination by design did the study and you paid, you paid them a hundred and twenty-five thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
To tell you what this is going to cost?
Well, no, there, there's more to it than that. They're designed, there's, um...
So what did they do? If they didn't design, I mean, if their destination by design, what, what did they do?
That's what I'm saying. They designed the signage. We had all the, all the specifications and everything. They've done the whole plan and whole program and I've shared that with you all before.
All right.
And you've seen that whole program.
All right.
Okay, that's what they've done for the funding that they've done and set us up because these signs cannot just be signs that you just put up.
Understood.
They have to be breakaway signs. They have to be identified on this.
Because they're on the right of way.
Because they're on the right of way.
So they...
And that's where their value is on the right of way. Because the further they get away from the area, they get, they get where they're not at stake.
But they, they didn't give you any idea of, of how much it still costs?
Yes, ma'am. I'll share that with you too, that somewhere between probably you're looking at, uh, eight thousand, eight to ten thousand dollars per sign. And our first wave of signage is going up, um, would, would, in phase one, would be, uh, uh, roughly twelve to fifteen signs.
So that's just the estimate. We don't know what...
That, that is an estimate based on what we know. And once we get, we may come in with bid a, a little bit less than that.
I doubt it.
We may come, we may come, uh, on, on those numbers. But I think when we, when we talked about those numbers, we looked at a higher number, not a lower one.
And, and the funds that, that we authorized was to go to destination by design?
The funds you authorized were going for the purchase of those signs, which was?
The signs. You mean, not the destination by design?
No, ma'am. The destination by design has been taken care of by the, by, to TDA.
And, and the last two years, and, and appreciate all these figures because this is something that we have had here for, but you're, you have received almost half a million dollars from the occupancy tax to do projects like this.
To do projects like this. Now, this is a capital buck project.
But it, but it falls under...
Most of, most of the funds that we, we generate go into grant funding.
Right, but, but this falls under, under your, uh, under your organization. Those funds are specifically for this type of thing.
Correct.
Uh, that's a whole lot of money and, uh, it's, uh, just a little curious why you needed a little more from us when it would appear that you have added funds to do this.
Well, if you, if, if you, if you'll see where we're at right now, and we'll talk about it just a little bit, but there's also, uh, uh, guidelines in which how we spend funds. Those guidelines, two-thirds have to go to marketing and promotion. One-third can go towards capital.
So this is not considered marketing and promotion. This is considered capital?
No, that's correct. This is, this is, this is, this will be marketing though. The signage project is marketing.
So it can come out of the two-thirds?
That's correct.
Oh, okay.
With, with funding of grants and, and I'll, and we'll get into that in just a minute about where we're at with grants and where we're at. We are, we are committed to the, not only the monies that have been paid to destination by design already, but we also have set aside fifty thousand dollars for the installation of first phase of signs. With the commitment that if we need to do, address more, we'll address more if we need to. Because right now, we, we, we asked fifty thousand dollars of this body and fifty thousand dollars of the town to get us to a hundred fifty thousand dollars to in, implement these signs. And right now, I believe we've kind of talked, Jose, if I'm, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're, we're talking about about thirty thousand dollars or so from this body?
You eradicated thirty thousand dollars. I sent an email. The TDA has come by and, and it's specified. It's in the ordinance.
Okay.
It's specified that the thirty thousand dollars that were allotted to the TDA was for the implementation of phase one signs only. So, uh...
And we've got, and we've got a commitment from the, from the county of forty thousand dollars. So in essence, the TDA will have to come up with the rest of the amount of money based on what the, what the projected amount is.
Unfortunately, uh, there's some taxes going up, so that's a good thing.
So, and, and we've seen, we've seen, uh, one of, one of the things, just going through some of that as well, uh, going through some of this documentation, um, with, uh, we've had a great connection and, and great support from the, from the chamber. And that continues to be a good marketing tool for us in relationship to what we're doing, in relationship that's there. In relationship to that as well, we've also been able to acquire some technology that has been able to give us the ability to analyze and to be a review of events and functions to a much greater degree. And that, with that's, with that, we'll be able to look at, at these events and be able to really hone in on what, what we need to be supporting and possibly in some cases what we don't. But at the same time, to be able to give them feedback and let them know what's going on and why, why it turned out the way it did. Uh, some of that is weather related, some of those issues that we've had over the last couple of years where events have been dictated by the weather, but at the same time, we'll, we'll be able to give them some, some good feedback in relationship to that. Um, basically, we've, we've been able to invest over this last year, uh, two hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars worth of, uh, in, uh, mon, uh, funds. And, uh, if you look at that, bottom of that first page, our, our fund balance, uh, audit fund balance is a hundred ninety, one hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars, uh, revenue of, of, uh, two hundred fifty-three thousand dollars and expenses of two hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, we also have a hundred sixty-three thousand dollars in long-range planning fund, which is funds that have been allocated over the, the last several years and accumulated in that fund balance. Exhibit, exhibit A, uh, is just a re, uh, rehash of those numbers, which at the time when this was printed, uh, we had thirty-two thousand dollars available, uh, available to utilize. Uh, then going to exhibit B, uh, that is expenditure broken down by, uh, abbreviated, uh, expenditure list, but it's broken down by, uh, line item. And then, uh, you've got exhibit C, which is our expenditures, uh, for grants and, uh, other items for, uh, the, the last quarter of the year. And I would just, uh, highlight on a couple of those there, um, that would, uh, include, but not limit to two, but that included, uh, the investment in San Brown Mountain, uh, with a hyping, uh, association of a ten thousand dollar grant, the Apple Pie Festival, uh, eight thousand dollar grant, Music on Main with a five thousand dollar grant, Small Town Jeep Club with, uh, Jeep Save Christmas, a forty-five hundred dollar grant, Fiddler's Convention of nine thousand dollars and then the Blue Ridge Fiber Fest of forty-eight hundred dollars. We also had funded, uh, to, uh, the Spring Litter Suite, uh, by Key Valley Candy Litter Free, uh, twenty-two hundred dollars. Those are funds that we allocate for every garbage bag, uh, trash bag that's picked up in the county. Um, the TDA supports it by ten dollars for that fund. So all in all, uh, it was a pretty transitional, where we took in X amount of dollars, we, we gave out X amount of dollars and we've got so much in reserve. And, uh, I think at the end of the day, uh, we've been trying to do our due diligence in how we handle these funds and making sure that we're investing in the community.
Steve, that's been a lot of this money here to this community right there and all the hard work. I know we appreciate everybody that you've done.
It's a, it's a good group of folks that are on the, on the board for sure. And I think their hearts in, in doing the right thing. The last page you got on your list there, and I would just, that indicates how those funds came in by month. And, uh, you can, you can see, uh, the, definitely July, August and September were, were typically, uh, uh, higher months in, in that income base. And then if you go back and look at the very last one in June of forty-three thousand dollars, it was, it was a, it was a huge month. But in December, it also picked up and I think some of that had to do with different things that were going on and usage of our hotels as well during that time period. So...
You smell it out there, don't you? So about the, the, you want us to manage these pickleball funds, that's, you know, saying?
Yeah, uh, the, the other thing that, uh, unless there's any other questions, um, the other impact was, and, and I talked to Peggy in relationship to some of the funds, there was, uh, some funds that were left over, uh, from the pickleball, uh, of course, being completed. And that was put on a line item and, and the request, I guess Peggy, more than anything else, is that that line item can stay open for future, future use and be designated for the pickleball courts so that we can help interject some more funds into the equation and be able to help maintain those courts and not be a total burden of town. So the, I guess the request really is to be able to keep that, that line item open for that use and that use only and, and, uh, be able to install, put some money in, continue to put money into that, that environment and let you know when that money's coming in.
The only question I've got on that is how, how do you know when the money's going out? Who asked for that money?
Um, it would be requested and have to be requested here.
Okay.
I think you have to come, it would be where you have to come in. It's not just a matter of going to Peggy. It would be coming to the board.
Okay.
Yeah. I think that's the right thing to do. And then that way, y'all, y'all can identify what it is we're doing or want to do.
Right.
And then, and then why and, and then be able to recognize what, what the money would be spent for.
You good with that, Peggy?
Yeah, the line item is open from the last one.
I tell you, we're all ready. It's already with us.
It's already with us.
Uh, last, 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 last thing I, well, uh, that you, y'all have to vote on that?
I'll make the motion.
What do we make the motion for?
For the town to keep the line item.
Keep the line item open, keep where it is. I can second, Peggy, yeah? If you've already got it, I don't think you want to.
Got a motion? Got a second? On, please?
Now, the commitment, commitment to that naturally would be to come before you before anything was addressed or done.
Okay.
So the thing about to, i- i- if I could add just to give you one more thing, and I, I spoke to Jose about it and I know he's had a, a call, I think, prior to us having this conversation, but, uh, there was a request to have a, a tournament on those courts during the week, the, the weekend of, of the, the festival. And, uh...
What festival?
The, uh... The, uh, Carrot Festival, not Carrot Festival. So, uh, the, uh, the thought process is, and, and I know, I know, I pretty much figured what the answer was going to be in relationship to having those courts available for people's use and not having them tied up in, 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 in ongoing thing. The funds for this tournament would, would be to go to this, this line item for enhancements of that, that environment. And, um, I think it's a good way to introduce the sport to more people in the environment. It's a round robin tournament. It's one that would be done for anybody to be able to play at any level. And be introduced to play with other individuals and kind of get an idea of what, what the whole sport is about and be able to watch that. Uh, it's a good time to do it during the festival, and I think it's, uh, it's one that, um, it's, this is not being asked in, in an effort to tie these courts over and over and over and over. This is probably something that would happen on an annual basis on this particular tournament. And if anything else happened, it would be, it would be, have to still come before this board. And then also, um, uh, hopefully be, uh, something that would be, uh, warranted and needed to have happen, uh, not just, just a, for, for just anything, but, but, uh, but I think this is a good opportunity to kind of introduce the sport, but at the same time, be able to a, a, address some funding, um, support for that, for those courts as well. And it's, it's a small, uh, window of time. Um, it'd be Saturday morning, it would start first thing in the morning, and then in, I think, Carol.
I keep planning a higher level at nine o'clock and then a lower level at twelve o'clock.
At twelve o'clock. So there's, there's a, there's a time period there, but I think i- in, in respect to the total time period those courts are available, it's a small price to pay to have an introduction of something like this in the community, so.
That would be coordinated.
Um, and that would actually be Carol, and, and Carol, uh, has done this quite a bit, and she's done some stuff, uh, with other, other entities to, to create those type of events.
Counsel, just, just to kind of give you a briefing on that. The request was made to us about reservations, and I advise that we cannot do reservations at the pickleball court because one, we never establish a P schedule for it, two, because of the impact, I spoke, I, I spoke for Steve about this, because of the impact that the pickleball court has on the community. Uh, we really don't want to come back around and start blocking it all for tournaments that may never occur and then we prevent people from utilizing it. So at this point in time, the pickleball courts are first come, first served basis. Um, I've foretold that they elected to have a tournament. Um, that was up to, to them, they kind of had to coordinate it. We're not tying any resources from the town, and we're not reserving that, so they just have to, to, to be mindful that other people may want to utilize it, and they want to take it upon themselves to try to incorporate them into that. That would be up to them, but we're not reserving the pickleball court this fiscal year for open tournaments for any specific groups.
And I think that's true, of course, obviously true, but if, if the motivation is to attract other people, then you would, whoever happened to want to eat, you'd let them play.
Sure, and here's the thing.
You can't, you can't reserve it, but.
If we advertise it and then actually identify signage, and one thing I asked Jose, if we could put some signage up on at the courts, very, very, you know, well done, tasteful, and just say, and just say there's going to be a tournament offered
And everybody's welcome.
in that time period.
Everybody's welcome.
Yeah, everybody's welcome.
Now, the only other question is how these people are going to get to the pickle court if the main street's closed? From a pizzeria up to, uh, uh, First Green Bank, how they gonna find pickleball?
Well, I think, I think, you know, most people are probably going to be involved in, in this, and this, what this would go out on is Team Reach, which is a program, uh, online that they can see that the event's going to happen, and, and they'll get, they'll, they'll find a way there.
And, and so, so they're going to, they're going to know from that website or whatever, it's going to provide directions because first you say, these, for people that already know what the place is, but they want new people, so they're going to come along in this part of, and, and the main street's closed, so how they gonna?
Well, there's, there's detours, there's detour information that goes around, and so we'll, we'll, you know.
But the detour information doesn't specifically say this way of pickleball. Is anybody else living on this? How they gonna find pickleball?
Well, I mean, we're identified as a cross park, I mean, cross parks are already identified with peace and the county.
Basically, we're not operating any damage over here because we can't.
Correct, we're not.
This is, this is.
I appreciate you letting us know, and I see what, I mean, I.
The thing about it is, 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 and the vi, the bigger thing is, is are you, are, is this body okay with us pursuing that? And based on the, on what Jose has presented? And also if we, if we could put some, uh, we'll, we'll establish signs identifying that that's going to happen on that day and, and everybody's welcome.
I can say that every time I pass by there, it's all, all full, if not full and overflow, I see people sitting around and playing their turn. So I mean, I, I see no problem with this at all.
And I think it's, you know, there could be so, some little glitches there in relationship to it, but at the end of the day, I think if it's, if everybody who's there is going to provide these services, they're early, ready to get started, and then, and then can engage people in doing something that want to come play, uh, we'll, we'll try to make that as inviting as possible.
Need to make a motion on that?
Nope.
Just, no, I'm not even doing, I'm just doing all I'm doing.
Okay, they're doing it anyway. Everybody's welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, pickleball court lights. The council, uh, provided you a, a brief synopsis of what, you know, on the pickleball court lights that were installed at the park. Uh, just kind of summarize the synopsis. Uh, you know, I was informed of this on the twenty fifth of, month of, of August. I reached out to Mayor Prokén, who advised me he was unaware on the twenty sixth that the lights had been, uh, who had authorized the lights. We went through this process and we've made contact with, uh, with, uh, Baron Atwood, who informed me that the lights were going to start at Blue Ridge on Friday of the, the entire week of the, the twenty fifth. Um, he, they were receiving, given a work order from Blue Ridge to install those, uh, light bulbs. Um, on the twenty seventh, um, I did meet with the Cross Park Committee and I did inform them that the proper procedure for having such, such things occur has to come before town council for us to be able to have, uh, have those lights on there. Uh, it does inquire a cost to the town. The cost is forty two dollars and some change a month for those lights. Um, Mr. Mitter did confirm to me that he had spoken with Mr. Rose at Blue Ridge. However, Mr. Mitter confirmed, confirmed that he was unaware that Blue Ridge had installed those lights. Um, and in essence, Mr. Atwood informed me that, uh, somebody at Blue Ridge had not been able to check and balance properly and contacted town and obtained proper, uh, authorization for those lights to be, uh, installed and activated. So at this time, the lights at the pickleball court had been cut off because we don't, we did not authorize an account to be open on behalf of the town itself. Um, before we can proceed forward with anything else on this, a council would, uh, have to come up to council for, for your review, uh, and determine whether we continue on with the pickleball court lights, uh, remove the lights, uh, or, and if so, there's, there's a couple options on if we keep the lights. Uh, we could either duck it from the line item that is going to be kept for the pickleball courts, or we can absorb the cost into the general fund, uh, for the remainder of the fiscal year. And I'll bring us up to discussion.
Mr. Vetrone, what's, what is the park on?
The park is supposed to be closing at dark. So the park is set open, um, at dawn, make sure I said that right, dawn, and close, and close at dusk. Uh, we have informed the police department that they, even though we have light, even though the light was up there for the first couple of days, they still had to, uh, tell people to leave if they were still there at dusk. There's a couple of things that we do need to take into consideration. We do have a nor, a noise ordinance that takes effect, and if I'm correct, it's going to be at eleven o'clock. Um, so after eleven o'clock, you, you have to keep the noise level down. Um, we also have had issues in the past with vandalism at the, at the park, and that's another reason that we, we asked the park to be closed at, uh, at dark, and we asked the police department to run around and make sure that nobody's there. Uh, because we do have, for example, the, the lower bathrooms have been shut off all year long. We have had several complaints about the lower bathrooms, and we're going to have to redo the entire bathroom because people have, uh, gone in, have kicked the doors, and have, uh, broken the, the, the commode in there. And this past weekend, we had somebody decide that it was going to be, uh, nice to put a bench inside the creek. One of the park benches into the creek at the park.
A bean?
Yeah.
I thought I didn't understand it.
Yeah, somebody built a, uh, one of these. One of our black, uh, park benches in the creek at the park.
Middle bench?
Yes, sir.
Um.
So we're, we're going to have to, and look into, uh, some more cameras. And furthermore, it resurfaces the discussion that we had last month, which is unsupervised juveniles at the park. Um, we're, it's something we don't want to do, but if these, I, if these, uh, sort of things continue to happen, we're going to have to look at ways to control, um, damages being done to these parks.
And then if, if lights were allowed and weren't taken place, should that happen, then if there's little kids come in and want to shoot baskets under the streetlight just across the way, then they're going to get hustled by the park because they're not supposed to be there after dark. It would appear to me we either have to stick to our, our rules and close the park or not because you can't allow some things to go on and other things not. So, uh, I mean, just looking at it from, from how the whole park's located, because we came in these kids off the first shooting baskets, and they're going to say, well, these people over here playing pickleball, why can't, why can't we stay over here and play, shoot baskets?
You are correct. There are no lights and any other facilities at the park at this point in time. There are a couple of, what you referred to as security lights throughout the, the park.
You know, if the kids want to go down there and they want to shoot some baskets, so they're going to be, uh, run off by the, the police. So we, we, we have to maintain them. There's going to be some threat, in my opinion, but.
Correct. When I informed the, uh, the Cross Park Committee, because I was first, it's more, or I was, the, the inquiry for lights was made to me earlier last month. And I did tell them that, uh, I would have to, one, we'd have to get approval from council. We'd have to discuss it in council meeting because the park closes at dark. Uh, two, it was my impression that the lights that they were seeking were more stadium style lighting that could be cut on and off and set on a timer. This pole itself is not, uh, set to be on a timer. The lights do affect only the pickleball court, but they are on all night long. So once a light cuts on, it doesn't cut off until the next day because it is on a photo cell sensor. Uh, so it, you can't really deactivate the light at ten o'clock. So if you said, we're going to, at ten o'clock, we're going to shut it off, you can't shut it off at ten o'clock. Um, we, we, the, the only, the downside to that light pole that was established is we can't really control it. It turns on and off by itself.
Do you, do you want to share, at some point, everybody certainly make your comments, but you gave us a printout on what Mr. Atwood said, and I spoke to Mr. Atwood, and he was very embarrassed, I guess it's okay for me to say this, uh, that, that the ball got dropped, uh, along the way and, and at his organization as well, but he did make a comment and, and.
Yeah, so, so Mr., uh, you know, speaking to Mr. Atwood, he's, uh, he is home safe to life. Uh, but his, his comment was, in his opinion, and after speaking with him about it, was the proper procedures weren't followed to get these lights installed. Uh, so his recommendation would be to remove the lights, and then this could be revisited in the future. Uh, once we follow the proper procedures, make sure we, we, we come out with a vision of what needs to be done.
And that was a discussion I had with him as well, and I do agree completely. We can't, uh, it's like when you're dealing with your students or whoever, you can't, uh, ask for forgiveness instead of permission. So I agree with Mr. Atwood. Timlin?
Uh, yeah, I do too. I mean, I, I, you gotta go through the rock, you know. Of course, we are, uh, council, have to kind of go through the council before he, uh, actions taken on the land that the town.
And Mr. Mason was very careful, mentioned this a few moments ago. He said that any thing that you all chose to do, uh, if I may quote, should come to the council. It's not just about asking Peggy, uh, but it should come for us. So I think that answers the question. Mr. Mason answered for it.
So, how much money's left in that pot?
We don't have any. They used it up.
Okay.
They're not in there.
Does, just a quick question. Does the lights provide any extra security at the park?
It only shines mostly down on the, on the court. You could see them from a distance in the far camera. Nowhere near to the point they step about here.
It's just that we didn't authorize. So if we need more security, we would authorize it.
That's correct. At this point in time, in regards to added security, which I, I brought up, that we're going to have to look at. We're looking at additional cameras because those are night vision cameras, and they allow us to, that, they change by themselves at a specific timeframe. Um, you know, so they, they actually, the, the night vision cameras do a pretty good job of picking up. They actually do better than if you had a, a light that is, uh, keeping it from switching to night vision.
You mentioned the stadium light. Have you looked into that at all?
No, we have not, because, uh, that was a discussion that I was going to have with council, uh, you know, we look for lighting, if so, then we need to adjust the rules to the, to the park, and we set them up on a timer. Then we begin the process of looking for the adequate light, but then a reasonable price range, not that it's going to be too expensive. In other words, you don't want to do like a football stadium style light that you have at, at high school, but you do want some to go right over the fence and are angled down to the courts and can be set on a timer, on and off. Um, or could be manually cut on and off. Um, but no, we have not received, we haven't looked for lights in a while. And I'll be honest with you, after this kind of popped up, we haven't really looked into it anymore until we get a resolution whether we, uh, let these stay or we take these off and look for other, other sources of light.
Well, I think that's putting the cart before the horse. We have to have a formal request to do anything at first.
That, that is correct, and, and that was, uh, like I said, that was supposed to be up for discussion before this.
I'd say it, uh, to me, you're out there, it wouldn't roll that in front of the council about having these lights and needing to remove the lights.
I'll agree with Mayor Prokén. I think Mr. Atwood is doing this.
And I think, uh, you know, to look at, not saying that there won't be any lights, but right now, this is the wrong kind of light. And, uh, we'll have to look at, uh, the, the light situations, the timers and the cost. Uh, it may have to go in next year's budget. So, I agree. I make a motion, Mayor, if we take the light down.
Okay.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor? Three, one. Okay. Moving on. Uh, Evergreen Street transitioned to a one-way street.
Uh, council, just to figure out, I'm going to try to get clear stuff pop up. So council, there's a, there's been some, some discussion about Evergreen Street itself. There's been some discussion about Evergreen Street. Um, there was a, it was, was brought up a couple of months ago by council member Billy about putting a concrete pole where this cone currently sits after a car has took down the original plastic pole. And, and I can't remember, did it hit the building or nearly hit the building?
It smelled, but it, it didn't hit, but it ran over.
Alright, so, and that, that apparently happened during one of the musical main, uh, festivals, as they were trying to move vehicles around. Someone struck that right there. So I did tell her that I would look into this street itself and speak to DOT about this street. Because it is a town street, but the pole would technically be on the right-of-way of the state-maintained road, which is West Whitehead, otherwise known by them as North Carolina Highway eighteen. Um, after speaking with DOT on an unrelated issue, one of their safety engineers was up here on a separate matter. But while they were here, we discussed this, uh, street itself. And they, we, we viewed that the, we wanted to discuss changing that street to a one-way street. And, and the reason we looked at making it to a one-way street is if you're coming from Downton Street, which is the other street on the opposite end, back to eighteen. If you notice, your stop sign and your white line are way back here. Legally, you're supposed to stop before the white line. If you stop before the white line and you look to the left, you're gonna see a blue building. And then you're not gonna be able to see any oncoming traffic. So if you pull out, you'll be, you could be hit by vehicles coming down Downton Street. With that said, you have to creep up, and it, it's minimizing that. The, uh, one, you're putting your nose a little bit closer. There is a bit of gaps where you'd be able to look at. But it also makes it difficult for vehicles coming down Whitehead Street to make that right-hand turn onto Downton, or vehicles coming up Whitehead Street to make a left-hand turn, I, I mean, onto Evergreen, not Downton Street, onto Evergreen. So the recommendation by DOT safety engineer was moving it one way to go from eighteen to Downton Street. Push the lane of traffic that will be closest to the right-hand building, to the right side of the building, to the left lane. So in essence, you're driving on the left side. Uh, and then you can open, you can mark off that section right there near the building. And then once you got past the building, uh, you can actually open that up for parallel parking along the, um, the right side of the road. Uh, if that was an option that council wanted to look at. Along with that, a couple of property owners back here have also asked about some of the bushes in this area. Uh, we would, you know, we, you could look into, and, and you can't go onto a street because Google Maps will not take you down it. Um, but there are a couple islands here that divide the street from the actual town parking lot. You can actually turn back around and make it a one-way street, change the whole design of that parking lot and improve the parking area back there. And make it to where people are coming off one side and exit out the same, exit out one way as well. Uh, just for some measurements, I did measure Evergreen Street itself. Evergreen Street is eighteen feet and six inches wide. And that is from one curve to the, to the other curve. A US eighteen, one native US eighteen itself is eleven feet. Uh, and that is from white line to the yellow line. As you can tell, this is, uh, it's a very narrow street when you try to put two cars in there at the same time. When you get two large oversized vehicles, it's, it does make it into a, a narrower street. I did speak with Mr. Lyle, because his company does come through here. And they, they make that left-hand turn off of Whitehead Street onto Evergreen Street. Um, and me and him were discussing on a different matter, and he asked me what we would look at to try, and try to get back to a good point of this street. He asked what would be one thing that we would look at to try to keep cars from being on there. And there's a couple of options. We can either just paint this, stripe it, uh, with white striping. Uh, or you could do the, uh, the, the foldable white markers that you see on the interstate that are meant to collapse if a vehicle runs over them. His recommendation was to stripe it. Uh, that way it would allow for any oversized vehicle, not just his, but just any large vehicle, to make that turn and have ample space turning in there. And they're not hitting that, um, those poles themselves either. Which would also probably be highly recommended by risk management to do those versus putting something that can technically, they could possibly scratch somebody's car.
And he, and his, Blake, Blake got his input because he uses it all the time, because that's where his business is. So certainly what he feels like is good is certainly important to us.
And his is, he's gonna have probably some of the, because of what he's hauling in and out of there.
That's what I'm saying.
He's gonna have longer vehicle support.
He has to be.
So it would, uh, and, you know, you can, there's a couple of things you can do to that building. You can put a concrete, you can put a metal barricade on the edge of the building itself. But again, now we're having to look into structural engineering, can that building hold it? And the town would have to pay for any reinforcement to the building itself. Um, or you can put a barrier between the building and the road. But again, now you're having to go back and dig. So you'd be better off to just paint it and just shift the traffic to the left-hand lane. And you're basically driving on that left lane in that area. Uh, that would be the most ideal situation. But of course, before we can move that into a one-way street, we will open that up for public comment. Uh, and this is just for informational purposes at this point in time. And then if, again, the, the next step would be, um, it wouldn't have to be part of the street. But if you made it to a one-way street, uh, we would have to realign some of the parking lots in there. Because the way some of those cars park, they're coming off Downton Street, and they're parking at a, at a forty-five-degree angle, expecting to back out and come out on eighteen, and we're gonna have to readjust the parking lot as well.
What would it be? Is there enough room up here for the bank is, for a sidewalk down to there next to the road heading toward Mr. Lyle's?
There is, especially if you make it into a one-way street, because now you've got a large area to work with. But that would be, um, there is some discussion on that one, the next item on the agenda. Uh, with what risk management has informed that we cannot do, which we can, uh, well, we'll get to that one here in a minute to kind of stay on the agenda. But there is, there would be room for this item.
So your recommendation is to turn that into a one-way street and stripe it off?
My recommendation would be to council to proceed forward to getting public input into making Evergreen Street into a one-way street. And we start looking into what is required to, to change it into a one-way street and redo the striping of that parking lot. And of course, we have to notify, we'll have to put, uh, notices that we're changing the flow of traffic. Uh, for several weeks in advance, so the people are aware that we are, that they cannot come off Downton Street anymore. They have to come up again.
We'll have a public hearing about that.
Yes, we'll have to have a public hearing on that.
Will we do that next meeting?
Uh, maybe look into all the requirements by DOT for us to be able to change our street. And if we can, we can try to schedule for the next meeting. And, uh, because we'll have to, we can do the public hearing, and then we can come back at the next meeting after that, probably.
I mean, it's been that way for a long time, so if we're gonna have to wait a month or two, then we are.
Yeah, but I think that, if, if Mr. Lyle's satisfied with that, I think that's some problem, or something else. And this, the, when the street was built, it just was built.
Just to go through.
Yeah, it was, during, an alley back there in, in eighty-seven, when things were rebuilt. So it wasn't engineered or anything at the time, and it's become a problem because it's not wide enough, because we weren't established, so.
And I think you could take in little islands out that's dividing the street from the parking lot before they can realign their parking places. It's a one-way.
Yeah, it, it would definitely help out with the parking issue back there. I think we've had a few bump-ups in the back parking lots from what I've been told about some of the property owners. Or business owners.
Is that all we need on that?
Uh, yeah, so that's all we need on that one. So we, you know, we'll, uh, we'll start doing the research into what is required to, to get this moved over and scheduling a public hearing for the public to have, put their input on that.
Okay, start with the parking lot on Evergreen.
So we did, uh, while we're here on Evergreen Street, we did have, I did have risk management, uh, from our insurance company come down to review the street itself. Uh, and I sent you some notes on, on that. Uh, at, at this point in time, risk management is, uh, recommended that we do not, uh, do anything to the parking lot because we have some other bigger issues to deal with. Uh, the, the biggest thing we have right now is this sidewalk right here. And I have reached out to DOT, I sent DOT an email after I talked to all risk management. Because again, this is a state-maintained road, so we need to get clarification on what is required for setbacks. Also, the North Carolina Department of Transportation does offer some funding for sidewalks and pedestrian crossings on their own highways. So with that said, uh, I have reached out to Mr. Randall Miles from the, uh, um, District Eleven office and spoken with him, and he will be contacting me when he finds out what is, what North Carolina DOT District Eleven has available in their funds. Just to kind of give you some information, there are eighty-six, it's eighty-six feet and seven inches, rounding up to eighty-seven feet of sidewalks that is needed to be done. Current sidewalk that is in place at the front of these buildings is four foot, two inches. Uh, which is meets the minimum, the minimum has to be thirty-six inches, which is three feet. But they're not ADA compliant because of these stairs and the drop-offs on them. So I did do some, um, some digging around and trying to figure out. Because of the incline of Highway eighteen, this is gonna be considered to be a ramp, not a sidewalk. Uh, but there are some clauses that allow you to build the ramp versus sidewalks if you cannot, um, if you must go with the flow of the, of the terrain itself. In this case, there's nothing we can really do about this road. This road is built, um, the way it following the terrain. So unless you were to dig Main Street down into a pocketed slope, um, which you would be talking a significant dig. You're not gonna be able to.
We're just putting you more on.
It's, it's been done then, five, six times, man, that's, not lately.
So in my email, I did, when I spoke to DOT, I did give them the, all the measurements from the building to the end of the pavement. And at the end of the pavement, I'm referring to, you can tell where the, uh, eighteen has been repaved. Uh, where the new asphalt comes to an end, it's eight foot, eight feet, nine inches. That would get us in ADA compliance. Um, this is gonna be a costly project, uh, and this is gonna be one of those priority projects to make sure that the town is compliant and, and covered by insurance should something happen. We're also gonna have to redo this pedestrian crossing here, at least to be, uh, better marked. Which, that right there would be an easy fix, and we should be able to get that done within the next, uh, next month. Uh, the other issue we're gonna run into is gonna be the street pole. Uh, we're gonna have to make sure that there are thirty-six inches hit on the left or the right of that street pole. If not, we're gonna have to, uh, talk to Blue Ridge on the cost to remove that street pole.
No, sir. No, sir. It's skyline.
But that's guidelines.
And it's interesting, after we spent five billion dollars and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars in engineering that that's how it was left, non-compliant, which that's water over the dam, but it's skyline's pole.
Okay, so we, we would have to talk to the property owner of that pole. Because that pole, if, if we can't get thirty-six inches on the left or the right, that pole would have to be removed. And those wires would either have to go underground, or that pole was gonna have to be relocated to another location. Uh, to, to get, get our sidewalks back in compliance. So at this time, uh, in essence, we have a sidewalk for our ADA population to get out and look at the other cars. And, 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 you know, the most unfairest way to look at it, because we don't have proper access for them to get from that sidewalk to Main Street. So back to the question on the sidewalk itself on Evergreen Street. Uh, there is enough room in there for a sidewalk in the future. We would have to come in after we fix the other sidewalk first, which we can make. We can look into the, uh, into making it to one large package itself where you have the sidewalk. It comes down, crosses the pedestrian crossing, and then you cut your sidewalks back to the right to go up Evergreen Street. Because that is another thing about the stairs. Another reason that the risk management says no to stairs is if we build stairs on that bank at this point in time, when you take the step off the stairs, you're stepping straight into a line of traffic. So we would have to have a sidewalk there and then do a second pedestrian crossing on the top of Evergreen Street. We are looking at an extensive project to be able to get Evergreen Street and the parking lot stairs and to make them compliant with ADA recommendations, or ADA requirements, not recommendations. And, uh, so I just wanted to, to bring that up. And I know there's, there's been several, there's been a lot of requests for stairs. And at one point in time, one of the property owners informed me that they were told that, uh, stairs were coming this year. And I informed her that, uh, that was, I was not told a stair to be built.
Nor was the council.
Um, so there was no.
Nor was the council.
Nor was the council. I, I did, uh, this past weekend, or this past Friday, helping out our crews do some, uh, some workout and build. I did happen to find what looks to be the makings of two steps at the bottom of the, uh, the hill. We did remove those. So it looks like at some point in time, somebody did take it upon themselves to try to build some steps. And they laid just enough boards on there for, uh, the, the outline of two steps. We did remove those because we can't really have those out there. We're not in a point where we can tie money into steps without, for us to become compliant with that thing else.
Well, if you get a sidewalk out to there, what we was talking about, and, and have your handicap parking here on the end, it'd be ADA compliant, right?
Yeah, if we get the sidewalk.
Even, even, even if we, if you don't build a sidewalk, if it's one-way, there's plenty of space for the walk.
Yeah, and, and even if, if, if we, we could fix that, and you can even fix it, instead of pushing them all the way to the far left, you can push them to the middle and make your, you do your outline for your sidewalk on that one side of your pedestrian slash bike trail for bike lanes on that.
Without having a sidewalk.
Without having a four sidewalk.
I don't know how fast you're thinking, because it's not like four hundred people will buy that every day, I can tell you for a fact.
Yeah, there's, there's various ways to get us compliant. The first part we have to become compliant though is from this parking lot to these, uh, this sidewalk, to the end of the sidewalk.
So appreciate you looking into it. It's the worst mess in the town. Okay, report.
Oh, no, prepare for that. Managers report.
The managers report, uh, West Water, uh, upgrade, update, just to let you know, the official notice of award has been signed and mailed back to McGill. We are looking right now at a pre-construction, um, conference on nine fifteen. I did speak to Lock Lane, to Drew Sherrill from Lock Lane. They signed their portion, as soon as they signed their portion and sent it to us to have it signed. They have already, uh, begun ordering parts from the, uh, from their manufacturers before, so they can lock in prices and get all the material built, uh, sent into, to them. So as soon as we have our pre-construction conference on nine fifteen, and we, we establish a start date and an end date of the project itself. And, and it is, by the contract, it is a little over eighteen months, seems like eighteen months and two weeks. Um, by the time we get everything situated, we should be hopefully starting maybe October, uh, November at the latest. They should be coming in and started construction on the new, uh, wa- wastewater treatment. Um, stormwater update, so, I gave you an update as of the, as of Thursday. On Friday, I received a phone call from risk management about our stormwater issues itself. I, I did, uh, acquire, I did inquire from them in regards to the property owners that are directly affected by the stormwater. The information returned to me on Friday by risk management was, do not perform any work on private property outside of the right of way. If the individuals feel they have a claim, the town is to contact the claims department. The claims department will send a representative over to the town to evaluate the situation and determine whether the town needs to attach upon that property's wastewater, upon that property's stormwater issues or not. Uh, that is, we are not a stormwater system, we don't collect stormwater fees. Uh, our, our requirement to maintain stormwater stops at the public property. Um, and that will be, yeah, that's, that's been a very, um, passionate discussion by some property owners. We are reaching out to, uh, we, we will reach out to two individual property, or three property owners to let them know what, what we were informed, at that point in time, it's up to them if they elect to proceed full, trying to file a claim. Uh, the League of Municipalities informed us that this is a very common thing for them, and they do come out and evaluate each individual request on a case-by-case basis and go make a blanket recommendation. Uh, we are, we do have an easement agreement with one property owner, uh, that was, um, located by Mr. Kevin Dowell, doing some research. He found a easement agreement on one property owner where there is an agreement that the town will put water into the creek, the creek runs parallel to the property. He is going to reach out, or he has reached out, not going to, he has reached out to water and soil with the county. They are scheduling a meeting to meet on the property, evaluate the property itself. And even on that situation, uh, the North Carolina League of Municipalities informs us, we are not to act on that without them first evaluating soil and water recommendations and determining what the town needs to do to be in compliance with our insurance policies. Uh, and that is the update on stormwaters, on stormwater system. Sanitation, uh, recently we have had some property owners within HOA requesting third trash can. This request has not been fulfilled because the HOA prefers our garbage truck not to drive onto their property. Uh, they assert the property is a private drive and do not want the town sanitation truck entering or leaving that, uh, private drive itself. The main issue is that there are three properties in that HOA that are not part of the town. Uh, what they are requesting to produce is a community dump for the HOA itself at the end of the road. Uh, the, the issue with this is, we only, normally do three individual trashcans or, we do two or up to four individual trashcans for small businesses. And this is part of our policy, for a small business that does not have the room to hold a dumpster. There's ample room for them to have a dumpster, but they'd rather just have a third trashcan. Um, at this time, we haven't fulfilled that need, we are gonna reach out to them and tell them that they will have to, the best option today is we can create a, um, a, a business account for the HOA and they can divide the costs and then they can just stop all they want to, whether they in town or not, because it's being billed to one business, not being billed, not to the individual property owners. Uh, that's gonna be the best way that I've, I've thought about it and, you know, if they don't want us to go out there, um, we don't really, we should not be servicing with trash pickup for non-taxpaying citizens. Uh, so that's what, we will be reaching out to the property owners this week to let them know.
Yes, I didn't know, do you allow public comment? Because I just happen to be one of the, I was here for pickleball, but I'm one of the three people. But I checked my water bill, I think I just paid it today, and it has on there that I'm paying for trash pickup.
Correct, so all residents in the town pay for trash pickup, and that's why we're moving through three trashcans to the town resident, but we cannot provide trashcans to non-town residents that don't pay taxes to the town.
But I'm paying the full amount for trash pickup.
It is considered, it is a.
Available, availability fee, so.
It's an availability fee that's been set up for everyone, it was set up when trash collection was collected. And what we told the two individuals that had come up here to talk to, to me was we will be more than glad to pick up the trash for all the property owners that are in the HOA that pay town taxes. The ones that don't pay town taxes are not eligible for property collection because our policy specifies that we only do it for, for town residents. You pay sixteen dollars, sixteen dollars and some change for trash. We are moving away from purchasing a trashcan to getting a free, um, a free trash, one trashcan this year, and next year we're gonna allocate a second one. Um, that is due because you pay for that service, you're entitled to collect, to get your trash collected at the end of your driveway, for your trash. But we can't collect trash from non-taxpaying citizens. Uh, and, and we'll talk to the HOA president and, and try to come to a resolution on that itself. Um, but, um, I do want you to know that we are going to, that's the, the first HOA issue we ran into with this where not every HOA house is in the, uh, in town, so we'll, we'll try to address that. Backhoe equipment, just so you are aware, um, this is a, our backhoe went down from operations again the other day, uh, on Friday. It busted a second hydraulic, well, I'd say second, I couldn't tell you how many hydraulic lines to replace on this piece of machinery, but from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-five, this backhoe has cost the town fifteen thousand, seven hundred, eighty-six dollars and ten cents. In twenty twenty-five itself, the backhoe has cost the town two thousand, four hundred, four dollars and forty-six cents. Now, this does not include all the times that we've had to buy hydraulic fluid to refill the backhoe, uh, because it has dumped hydraulic fluids, a bucket of hydraulic fluid is about fifty dollars.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, there was one day our crews put about four buckets of hydraulic fluid into the backhoe. Uh, so at this time, what we're going to, we are tracking the expenditures on the backhoe itself. Uh, we are also looking to, uh, get pricing on a Mini-X, on a Mini-X and parking the backhoe and not utilizing for large-scale incidents. Um, with that said, uh, it also depends where we are financially come January. That is the biggest marker that we're looking at is where general fund revenue sits to general fund expenditures, enterprise revenue sits to enterprise expenditures in January. We don't just wanna go up the high of Mini-X and then run into a financial issue, we have to address it. Our crews have been doing a pretty good job of trying to take care of it as much as they can, uh, trying to keep it serviceable, but I do want to bring you to, uh, just bring you those numbers so that you are aware that we are gonna have to replace that piece of equipment either during this fiscal year, which was unplanned for, um, or we'll have to make it a priority at the beginning of the fiscal year to, uh, replace it next year. Moving on to the next, um, item that we have here, uh, zoning issues. We do have some zoning issues that are being evaluated and, and they're, we're looking at the ordinance itself. Uh, there's a lot of interpretation of the ordinance that were done, and, and, and what we're looking at, and I'm gonna speak to our attorney, um, is, there's a lot of, there's some great words in there, um, such as may or could that we need to really try to narrow in on because that sits for interpretation of whoever sits in, in the seat of the town manager position. Which can put the town in a a unfair or, correct, can, can put the property owners in an unfair position if the, if the town manager sided one over the other. Because ultimately zoning does fall back to the responsibility of the town. We are, next week I will be, for the next three months, I will be doing a, a, uh, zoning officer course with the school government, we are gonna address some of these issues with them. The school government is our best source to, to get, uh, clarification and to, and to, uh, rewording of our ordinances because that's what they, they do, that's their specialty, we are gonna be, um, as I go into this, this, uh, discussion with them, we're going to look at all of our zoning rules and figure out, and, and get the town in compliance so that it doesn't matter what the zoning rule says. The zoning rule will be interpreted one way, don't matter who the, the person is in charge over.
This is, and this is just for me, so maybe I should ask when we meet later, but is the zoning course online or is it something you have to go to?
It's a hybrid, online and in-person. But we'll, we'll discuss.
Cause I was thinking I might like to do that too.
Yeah, um, so we are, there's a lot of issues there we're going, we, we've got a couple, we do have a property that we are looking at, it's not compliant with zoning, aside from a, the original property that we discussed on Grandview. There are some remedies for civil penalties that I need to get clarification from the school government on what point in time we move into civil penalties for failure to, to follow zoning rules. Now, they do specify the general statutes that are outlined to those, but again, we do want to make sure that we uh, approach it with all answers, uh, and, and if we are equipped to, uh, if the individual wants to go to court, then we are equipped with, uh, all of the, the, our I's dotted and T's crossed so that we don't, uh, you know, we, we can set an example of how things gonna be done.
Good.
Um, with that, we are also, now that we have closed out the stormwater case with our League of Municipalities, we are gonna open the, uh, abandoned and, uh, abandoned cars on property case. They did ask us that we, um, open a separate ticket with the League of Municipalities to, for them to review and, and give us a final warning on abandoned cars on private properties. Uh, now that we've closed the stormwater case out, we are opening the ticket for, uh, abandoned vehicles, we'll try to give council an update on the zoning, because there are some zoning, there are some ordinance rules there. Sort of great, great areas that we wanna make sure we get correct. Uh, if we start sending ordinance violations to, to residents that have abandoned cars on their properties. And then finally to end on a good note, um, the tax department has been working very hard the past couple of months. Uh, since July one, they have collected seventy-one percent of the taxes. At this point in time, today was the last day for people to pay their town tax and get a two percent discount. After today, it will still be valid if it's mailed in and postponed by September second. They'll still have that two percent discount on their property tax. But we are at seventy-one percent, and if, uh, talking to the staff this morning or this afternoon, um, last year at the same time, we were below fifty percent on our tax charges. So they've been diligent, diligently working to, to get everybody in and out, um, that's what gets possible. So with that said, I'll turn, oh, letter from the Chamber of Commerce. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, I did provide your letter from the Chamber of Commerce in your pocket. If I don't tell this, I'll remind you, you know, I'll be over here telling me that I didn't remind you, but they do want to just, uh, brief synopsis, uh, show their appreciation to you in a, a letter for the, um, allocated funds that we gave them this year, uh, for them to be able to do their operation.
Uh, I'm telling you, I just wanna make you know, if you have any time set there, we'll be gonna start installing the new water meters that we talked about.
I, I spoke with Mr. Miles, uh, not Miles, um, Mr. Green last week, not.
I mean.
Not Mr., not, but, Mr. Randall, I think it's Green, Green or Greenson, I can't remember, but I will say Randall. Spoke with Randall last week and I asked to know where we were on those, um, and they were in the process of um, installing the FCC license on those meters. There are, there's gonna be a little bit over sixteen hundred, seventeen hundred, maybe eighteen hundred meters. Um, and of course, we have added some property owners to, to water within the town limits. Since then, our crews, every meter that we're having to replace, I will say this, every meter that we are having to replace at this point in time is a AMI capable meter, it is actually assigned to another municipality that is, um, does not need those, is what I was told by the vendor. It's assigned to another municipality, but when they get here, they will, uh, will have the soft cord to convert that meter from that municipality to our municipality and automatically start picking up. The last that they told me on Friday of last week was they were waiting on a antenna so that they can go ahead and install the, uh, the main antenna, um, Haynes thing.
That will, they'll get them going forward, yes, sir.
I told them that my objective was December thirty-first, they were all supposed to be there, and that they were not to make me look bad on that objective.
We'll see.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm staying on them and as we get closer, they get phone calls more frequently.
Oh, okay, thank you. Uh, any other business? Yes, you would, just step up here to the podium and state your name.
Hello, my name is Myra, I'm here, I'm a member of Catholic Church. I was here last year, so I'm request the same, um, to use a sidewalk for a, um, we call procession, but it's, um, for you guys, like a parade. Um, we, uh, we start last year beside the, I think it was the B C store, uh, where they sell alcohol. We start beside there.
You're first to start.
Uh, other way through the church is, um, I don't know, did we, shall we, there's a name on the road? Um, it just take us maybe between forty to, to forty-five minutes, um, that we, that we walk. Um, and this is, um, for December the twelfth.
December the twelfth?
Yes.
Did you help with that last year, Chief?
Yes, sir, I did.
You seen any problem with that?
Council, we, because we don't have it on the agenda, we can't, if they're going on today. We can put it on the agenda for the next council meeting, and then it can be voted on at that point in time.
Okay, I will, I will send that, so, okay.
So you let, let us know?
Okay.
And, uh, you, you put it on the agenda.
What is the one from the AMI, what is that, pardon, what's it called?
Um, procession or parade, um, yeah.
Against the baby's least to work to the Catholic Church.
Okay.
Yeah, just to be in compliance, we'll have to wait till the next council meeting.
No, I can do that.
And that'll be, uh, like, uh.
It'll be the first Tuesday in October.
On October, okay.
What was the date again, ma'am, Dec- December?
December the twelfth.
December twelfth.
She, the first meeting.
Oh, excuse me.
First meeting is in October, that's bad.
Uh, okay, so we'll get that on the next town meeting. And then, uh, public comment. You know, public comment. Okay.
Wait a minute, I'll make a public comment, I'm, I didn't know what was on your agenda tonight, but.
You'll come up, you'll come up, to the podium.
I didn't know what was on your agenda tonight, but, but the pickleball courts, my office is right across from there. And if you wanna put lights on there, if these people are asking for lights, if they make that formal request, I encourage you to, to look into that and to try and provide that because those people are playing all the time. And there's a lot of young people over there too. You know, people think that young people don't have anything to do, that is a fabulous thing for them to do, if they wanna shoot hoops at nine o'clock at night, put lights out there, let them shoot hoops. You know, if we got a noise ordinance, okay, you know, kill everything at eleven o'clock, but just a little feedback or input, lights are a great deterrent to vandalism. Um, you know, they don't have to shine over everybody's houses, they can shine down. And I'm sure Karen can help with that, but providing lighting for those people to have an activity out. And I'm sure Karen can help with that, but providing lighting for those people to have an activity outside sports. I encourage you, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Just give me a second, what she has to say, I, I was just kinda.
State, state your name.
Mark Campbell, but anyway, I'm, I'm just kinda impromptu, I wasn't planning to do this or anything, but I actually work for the town of Elkin. And, um, we have lights at Crater Park. And we're actually doing a tournament similar to what Steve is suggesting for the twentieth. Matter of fact, I happen to have flyers in my hand that we've been working on with Carol. Um, but I'm like this, uh, lady here, uh, you know, we have the pickleball court lights on late. And it's great, especially in the summer when it's hot, we get a whole lot more folks playing over the evening. And I'm not sure exactly who my, you know, Adam McCombe, y'all may know him, he's a director down there with Elkin Recreation Parks. You know, they've got certain rules and timers and things, but it works really well. So I'm sure there's a way to kinda make it work, but I'd like to just say it really is great. And, um, and then I hope things work out for the tournament on the twentieth, because. It's ironic, but I, um, the town of Elkin is doing the same thing that, uh, Steve is proposing. Um, with the pumpkin festival. As a matter of fact, Carol is also the director on that tournament. And it's working really well. And what we do is we just have the town basically, um. Um, put signs up that during that time period, the courts are reserved. And we mount them out there and then people, frankly, most of the people that are playing end up in the tournaments. And then when we're done, you know, we take the signs down, but it brings in money for the pickleball community. And, uh, like this tournament we're doing on the twenty seventh, uh, we're gonna get a new bench. And then we're also working for the North Carolina Recreation and Parks Scholarship Foundation.
Okay.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Just cut you down. I made a motion to go in close session, Michael.
We got a, uh, GS one forty-three dash three, one eight dash eleven. Close session, discuss personal or real estate property. So, have to ask everybody.